I'm live down here in Jersey Shore Town Meeting. There's music going on behind me, but I'm here for the fireworks. And right now, there's kids up on the bench here in front of me. I'm sitting in front of the elementary school over there, there's the junior high. The high school's on top of the hill, you can see the lights up there. They'll be shooting fireworks off up there by the, I'm gonna say up there by the high school. But there'll be fireworks shooting off all around here. I'm gonna have the camera this direction, so. Nope, they want me this way. If you want me that way, I'm gonna have to switch the... Facebook only wants me to do one angle. If I was shooting the other camp, the building camera, I would be shooting a different way. You're gonna have music behind me right now. And you can watch the kids play along. Poked it up, they don't hurt their head, they don't hit the stands. You're like he wants to be in the camera. See that fireworks be at 9:45? It's gonna have a slow connection right now, huh? That's nice. Stand up, yeah. Looks like the slow connection is only down near the ground. 9:45 is when the fireworks starts. So if you wanna go get a snack and stuff, you have almost 45 minutes. Well, since I'm here at the park, I'm gonna show you what it looks like behind me. Stage. You can see what the light's on. Over there, over the rise, over by the football field. That'd be, it's... I'll probably stand up during the fireworks. But the reason why I'll be standing up, there'll be some people in the way. I'll be moving away from the chair, so I can get a better angle. But right now... Woo, got a dragonfly flying over our head. Lightning bug too. Got a bunch of lightning bugs out here. Ah, look at that moon today. A little brighter than normal. Go get a snack and go get yourself some popcorn and make yourself a hoagie and some pierogies, since we're in Pennsylvania. Add some pierogies and some scrapple. Even a Hershey's candy bar and even a Big Mac. All from Pennsylvania. But Big Mac was first suggested in Pennsylvania out towards Pittsburgh. And they have a Big Mac museum out there. You know that Hershey has their own museum too. There's one you need, we needed a Scrappy museum, right? There's a lot, we have, you can see it, we have a dragonfly flying over our heads. Look at the lightning bugs.
You saw all the ping pong candy?
Yeah, right there, it'd just be a good lightning bug field. If you wanted to catch lightning bugs. If you wanted to catch lightning bugs, it'd be a good field to do it in. Trying to get them out there to catch lightning bugs, since they're sitting over there. Ah, I don't know if you can see the lightning bugs, but they're there. Ah, they're gonna be in the Mackeyville. The same band's gonna be over in Mackeyville at the fairgrounds. We're getting a bottle of fireworks behind us. Well, yep, they have a Roman candle shooting, yeah, the Roman candle shooting off back there.
I want some.
They're all, they'll be all around now, since it's a 4th of July weekend. And since you can have fireworks pretty much anywhere now. Okay, when we're growing up, we weren't allowed to have them, but we still had them anyhow. See, one over that way. If I make you dizzy, I'm just trying to find the other places to shoot fireworks off at. When they're done here, there'll probably, there'll be some down there, or the last few years, some down at that one church down here shooting them off. And the church behind us, up on the hill, seems to be, seems shoots off fireworks. Oh, here comes a guy with the fireworks lighter. Yep, they're all over the place, I'm not gonna go looking around for anymore. Two tickets to paradise. Who would want two... Who would want two tickets for a pair of dice? I don't know. Who would want, who would want two tickets for a pair of dice? Two ticket to paradise? Yeah, who would want two tickets for a pair of dice? Yeah, that's other fireworks going off. It's probably, might be the last fireworks you get to see until Labor Day. Well, I might find another place that has them. But first, hopefully I can get one of these new cars, they call me. Oh, that feels good. Figured how hot it was earlier. Ooh, we got a boomer behind us. I might have a slow connection here where I'm located, but I'll be getting up, so you can see the fireworks a little better. There you have, a little over a half hour. Still, you can see the, also, you can see the horizon and the sun going, the sunset. Out, out west. Yep. Right now, you'll be seeing a fence, but I will be standing up. Hope nobody's standing up behind me. I'll stand right there by the pole. Yeah, you have a slow connection at this time, so. Now I'm out of water. A good field to do it in. Lightning bugs flying around me. Yeah, you'll see some up the hill, and you'll see some behind me. And you'll probably... It's not the fireworks, there's other people, it's private fireworks. Ah, Roman candle. Ah, that's pretty much gonna be right about that height with the fire, watching the fireworks. I can get a little higher if I take the one thing out of my pocket. Four out, I can take it. Yeah, right about here, no slow connection. The reason why I come on early is to test out what I need to do. Probably think, one thought I'm probably gonna do a selfie on me. I'm not doing selfie, I'm pointing the other direction. I can do it, I can turn the camera around. They put that eligibility on here, but they didn't put a pause. If they put a pause, I wouldn't have to worry about it, they put pause on there. I don't know where to pa- pause the livestream. I know, standing up and moving the camera around doesn't qualify, it's using your tripod. Nice breeze out here tonight. That's good for the fireworks. I'm gonna go back, sit down for the next half hour. I don't wanna do like I did down in... Down Montgomery, I almost missed the first part of it. Not to miss, I think I might've missed one or two. We have fireworks going off everywhere. I don't know if anybody that I asked to come down here is gonna be coming down, so. I only asked one person. It's like maybe her and her daughter and whoever's daughter's friends would like to be down here watching the fireworks. I probably wouldn't be around them anyhow, so. I'd rather not be around when I'm filming, around other people when I'm filming at this time. Fire trucks going out in the field. Or leaving the field.
My heart's so bad.
Probably hit, ah, I'm not sure if they have a call or not, they might. But right now, it doesn't say it has any. Yeah, and it's not the fireworks yet, it will be here at 9:45. And I have a, I have a, I have a photo bomber. A young girl phoned by me. Looks like she's trying to do karate moves. Are you ready? Are you guys getting ready? Are you getting ready? Oh, looks like I'm getting filmed and he's filming me. Somebody have a camera, a camera on. I don't get why they, well, the kids out there so close, close to something out there. No, well. Got a ball bouncing around. I don't know if you heard that, but my neck just really gave a big old snap. This year, I'm gonna try something a little bit different this year. Last year, I couldn't film. I don't even have, I don't even have a lamp on like they do, and I can see them pretty good out there. I don't even, right now, it's past twilight. Yeah, I can even see the little one that keep bombing in. Keep moving into the picture. Man, pretty good filming. Alright, we have... We have 20 minutes. So get your last minute snacks in, get your combos and chips and pretzels and... Jenny, Jenny. There's watch him dance. And I'm getting, I'm getting... I'm just trying to film, I'm gonna film, I am live, but they don't know it. You can see, you can see everybody here in the ball field, the baseball field. Can see pretty good, I don't even have, I don't even have a light on. That's why, when I was walking last night, I was wondering why I still could see a lot more people than everybody else. Get to wa- you get to watch some people playing around. Oh, got some fireworks over this way. Nighttime fireworks, huh? Supposed to be night, but for some reason, it's bright. Wonder if I darken it a little bit. Let's just, yeah, but not as good, okay. That's the way I want them, I don't want it as bright as it was a few minutes ago. It was totally up on brightness. That's one way to drain your battery. Full power on high. But the reason why I have on full power when I have it at the house, I can see it better. That place I lived, the lights aren't really that great. They have it, they put the dimmest lights they can put in there and the cheapest. Hello? There's a reason why I'm pointing, and I think that's a little too... I'm gonna brighten it up a little bit more. Alright, now you might be able to see a little better, I just, I put it up there way too high. And one of them ones have lights on there. I will be filming in a few minutes here, but you have, I have to wait till the fireworks go off. And wait till the band, once the band's done behind me. That's when the... But I think they're still gonna be playing, but I think, yep. They have 15 minutes to go. I'll be standing up, probably go a little further back. And probably bring the camera up like that, so you can see. I'm not standing up now, I just, I had to sit down for a few minutes. To get, to get ready to stand up. I'm just hoping I can stand up where I wanna stand up at. People, people seems are gonna come in over to beside me. Yeah, the fireworks shot off behind me. But you can see, see what it looks like out here with the, with the town meeting going on down there. Down, like the downdraft down there in Cannobles. Yeah, see the, see the nice moon up there? With the breeze blowing, keeps the bugs away, but... Still some land on you. Yeah. Yeah, it'll be coming on a little soon here. Tighten this up a little bit. Fire. Sounds like they're gonna have a little interesting stuff up the road there. Yeah. Fire, fire truck is leaving here. Sorry about that, little dizziness. Looks like a fire truck or a, a police car. Twenty-five minutes. No, not twenty-five, less than twenty-five, it's, I'm thinking, I'm thinking at ten o'clock, it's not, it's nine forty-five. So, get yourself a soda and get yourself ready. The reason why I had the question mark, don't mean they're gonna go off right at nine forty-five. There's fireworks going off over there, but that's not the fireworks. That's over at the one church, over near the one church over there on... On Main Street going clear down the, down though, uh... Down the, over the Pine Creek. Out near that area. It's in a different township, where, where, where that fireworks is getting, being shot off at. See how dark it is? But I get, uh, I can tell if they're getting ready out there. Nine forty-five. Why me, second, second, second ten? Alright, they're out, right out there, there's a light out, red light, car, car over there. Yeah, over there is a red light, underneath the stands there. Might be a car. I'll be getting up here in a few minutes. Yeah. Yep. Yeah, they're leaving. They're leaving. Fire. Where's the fire at? Jenny out of her town, she moved. Yeah, they're going, they're, they're, okay, they're the ones going on the field, alright. That's an awful bright light going across there, isn't it? Somebody's gonna send you one legs, huh? Ah, we got a crying baby now. Have a little bit of music to play. I think there's a stage right behind me. Not the top, Andy. I'll try to get my, get the fireworks in as best I can. Trying to keep from getting blinded, right now. And fireworks not going off to nine forty-five, so... Yeah, four, yeah, four min, four minutes. That's not the fireworks. I think we have our... We have an alien coming through. I'm gonna leave the alien go through. Alien going by. And this one's from the sky. As soon as the band's done in this song, probably. Can, can you find his way here? They pick one of the longest songs, isn't they? An instrumental on there, huh? Give me your morning. Later, sir. Flashback. That's the band's name, Flashback. Somebody's alarm going off. Smelling like... Sulfur where I'm at. And I did get a bunch of debris on me. The best thing to do is keep your do, doors all locked here. Put your arm goes off. Put your arms up. Ah, hit the car behind us. Yep, gets stuff over ya. Yeah, me too. Little star. Circle. We're playing... Oh, Green's a Saturn. The noise in the background is the ride. Down draft. Big ball.
Oh, I thought it all lit.
Oh, it don't burn.
No, it don't burn. I tell ya, it don't burn.
Yeah, I would tell ya, no, it don't burn.
Ooh, circle. Oh, that changed colors. From blue to red. Yeah, they did go from white, blue to red, okay. Pink.
I think they're done with that.
Yeah, they're done. They're filled anyhow. Oh, come on. Smelly face. I'm not near my sister at this time. She's behind me somewhere. I guess that's it, well. Hope you enjoyed it. Man, now I have to get all the debris off of me.
Me too. Hey, that one freaked me out. I took off running.
Yeah. I'm here filming it.
Hey, look at my chair. My chair is coated with stuff.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, I got a lot of debris on us. Okay, well, that's all I'm gonna do. I mean, they do have another set of fireworks gonna go off over that way. But, that's at that church. I'll catch you guys later. Guys, have a good day.